Enjoyed it when we did it, but the kids were. All right. We will call the meeting to order. This is the monthly meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Sandy. This is Monday, June twenty six, two thousand twenty three. Beginning the meeting on time at six thirty. This meeting is in hybrid. Fashion, in person and online. I'll give instructions later on when the time comes as to how people who are online can. They give testimony. So let's find out who's here with the roll call.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Commissioner Wegener.
Here.
Commissioner Lee Weinberg.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsay.
Here.
Chair Crosby.
Here.
And also joining us online, just so you're aware of who's on there, is our city attorney and Josh Soper and our executive assistant. Who is taking minutes Rebecca Markham, and then you do have some other people on the attendee list as well.
Okay. I was gonna ask you if you were the one taking the notes.
Uh, no, Rebecca's taking the notes from home.
All right. Okay, speaking of notes, we did have in our pocket the minutes from our last meeting, May twenty two, twenty twenty three. Uh, any additions, changes, corrections that were need to be noted? Okay, I don't see anything, so we will consider those minutes as approved as presented. And then all of our meetings, we give opportunities beginning for anybody in the public to. Speak to the planning commission on any topic that is not on the agenda tonight. And that is the time now. If you are online on Zoom to participate, you click the raise hand button and wait for Kelly to recognize you. If you're on the telephone, you dial star nine and same thing, wait to be recognized. If you are doing it that way, or if you are speaking here. Uh, we asked that you're in the room, come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. So this is the opportunity for just general requests. Comments from the floor to the planning commission on anything not of tonight's agenda. Okay, I don't see anything. We have one little item of housekeeping to take care of. Stephen Hook, who was our vice chair, as you all heard, had to step down from planning commission. Because of a new job that conflicted with Monday meetings. So we need to, I need to hear any nominations or suggestions for a vice chair. This position role will last, will go until the end of the year, because we. We re. We nominate first.
Self-nominate.
That is Commissioner Lee has thrown her hat in. Anybody else have a suggestion or an idea? Okay, it is quiet. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that needs a first and a second.
I think it'd be best to have a motion, just for the record.
We'll take yours as the nominee as a first.
I'd be happy to second.
Okay, and we have a second for Commissioner Lee to be the vice chair. And we'll just do a voice vote or a thumbs up on camera. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and a thumbs up. Any opposed? All right.
So that's five zero.
And if we have an August meeting, you're on the. All right. Mister City Council liaison. You, we're just so used to having you speak, but.
You want me to get up there?
Well, if you, if you, if you have any, any particular comments from the city council that we need, you think we should be aware of.
No, the only thing that I would add to the, the meeting minutes are that, um, the, uh, park. Park is campus, you know, this contract, the skateboard, they're ready, it closed. And we did have bid, a bid on it. Um, so that's, I mean, that was big news, because we allocated a lot of money to build that part. And we put it out for nomination for R and P and, and it went out and we had people bid on it. So. On that close, and there should be some exciting news, you know, about that. It's gonna be a long process, but I, I was excited when I saw that representation. Um, and then other than that, we had the Long Island State Parkway event, uh, just last weekend, at the Borested Park by Splash Bad. I think we had about three hundred and fifty people show up. I mean, it was a pretty big success. Over three hundred hot dogs. Very excited. So other than that. There was a fatality on the corner over here. I think that was it last night. On two eleven. And. Pioneer, um, so. It was a tragic accident that they ran into the, the corner. Doing investigation, so it's really all the news I have with.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the director's report. Uh, it was in our pocket. Uh, so Kelly, you can. Add to elaborate or ask the questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to do some fancier camera angles tonight, when, when I speak for longer like this and during the presentation. So. We'll see if I'm successful on it. So it's showing me now instead of the dais. Um, yeah, the main, the main few things I would like to let everybody know is the city council did pass. The biennial budget for the next two years, and we will be filling two positions, one of which is already. Been posted on the city website and at different websites for basically planners that they go to. Um, like the Oregon APA and the Washington APA. So we're hopeful that we'll get that filled within a couple of months. And then we're working on, um, finalizing the job description for a new code enforcement specialist. So traditionally in the city of Sandy over the last probably thirty, forty years. There's been one code enforcement officer and that person's been stationed out of the police department. That code enforcement officer has been very helpful to City Hall and to the department I oversee and Public Works. But the city has just gotten too large and there's not, we basically need another person to assist. And so what we're gonna be doing is creating two different positions. One of which is going to stay in the police department and focus more on police centric items like noise complaints, dogs. Um, stolen vehicles, illegally parked vehicles, um, things that would traditionally be taken care of by a police department. And the other position is going to be focused more on things in the development services and public works realm, such as. Sidewalk issues, street tree damage, sign violations, building code violations, um, and so on. So they're gonna be kind of divided up, and then our plan's going to be over this summer to create a really robust webpage. Uh, with all the information on it that depending on what your complaint or inquiry is, that this is who you contact. So it's very clearly delineated on the website. Um, and one of the main reasons we decided that it was, you know, that we approached it that way is because the police department. And, you know, the lieutenants and sergeants and chief over there really specialize in. Police violations and the people in our department specialize more in development code violations. So. Both the police chief and myself thought it was best if we had two different officers reporting to the two different departments. So that's an interesting update. Um, a small update on the sanitary sewer moratorium. The city entered into a consent decree, so basically a settlement, court settlement with EPA and DQ. We're hopeful that will be signed by the judge. In July, I believe, and then we repealed and replaced moratorium one point O is what I'm kind of calling it. Uh, that was established on October third, two thousand twenty two. And we replaced it with a new moratorium that does allow for some additional land use applications to be submitted. And also for more building permits to be issued is basically the main thrust of that change. Um, and then the stress test has all been completed out at the sewer treatment plant. And we're hopeful that the results will be. Done probably late summer and then. It'll have to be analyzed by both the city's engineering firm that we've hired and also by the EPA and DQ. So we're hopeful that sometime in the spring. It'll be agreed upon how much additional capacity basically opened up with all the sewer treatment plant. And sewer pipe lateral improvements we've done around town. Um, the upcoming meetings, there'll be no meeting in July. We're gonna take that month off and there might be on August fourteenth. And then there definitely will be on September twenty fifth. I won't go into the applications of note, just because you're all familiar with those, I believe, and I just wanted to kind of. Give a small update on those within, uh, the director report. The clear and objective audit, I believe most of you are aware of what's going on with that. There was a work session, uh, last week on that. And the TSP was adopted last Tuesday. So that's a big move. That's, uh, been a document that we've been preparing and moving forward on for, I believe, three and a half years. With our engineering firm and ODOT, and so that's complete and adopted. And then I just included a bunch of, um, information on comprehensive plan outreach that we'll be doing over the summer. And then also the additional outreach and feedback we're gonna be looking for in block two. Uh, which is mainly focused around natural hazards and parks of recreation. So, oh, and then the last thing, which I said I was gonna update you on, is with, uh, Commissioner Hook stepping down from the commission. Uh, we did post, I believe it was last week, the opening for the planning commission, so. I think they'll be open for two weeks, I believe. And then we're gonna move on it pretty quickly. There's. I believe mid-July, there'll be a meeting with any of the applicants that are the finalists. And I believe Commissioner Wegener will be serving that role. Assisting three different city councillors with selecting somebody to then be brought forward as a potential appointment before the city council. So hopefully we'll have somebody new in that role. I would think by August would be my hope. So it's pretty, pretty quick turnaround, actually. So I think, I think that's what I had for you.
Okay, and you had, you had mentioned something about updating legislation.
Oh, yes, sure.
That might be informative to us.
Yeah, yesterday was the last day of the legislative session. There was a bill on the floor that would have allowed any property to be exempt from the UGB and to move forward with development. So there was quite a concern whether that would pass or not. It failed by one vote because the Republicans had five people that didn't show up. For the meeting, so we missed, we dodged that bullet. But there is another bill, House Bill thirty-three ninety-five, that I sent to Kelly some info about, but. What it does is it changes some of the regulations for affordable housing. It has a new process for citing emergency shelters, um, new regulations for planned communities. And for single room occupancy residency and reduces some barriers in planning. Regulations, but there will be some grants from the state for some of that work.
Lots of stuff to come.
And it, and just so you know, we'll, we'll be trying to address as much. House bill incentive bill provisions as possible with the current objective audit, but, um. I would say over the last three years or so, the state's been moving so fast on bills that. It's very likely that we'll get done with the audit, uh, this winter. And then have to make additional code edits soon thereafter. And I'm almost positive that will happen. It's just the legislature is moving very quickly on land use bills.
Our attorney can give a better rendition of this.
I think that's very well done.
All right. Anybody have questions for Kelly? Very well, we have one public hearing tonight. Which we will, and again, I will be given instructions to those online. Uh, for testimony and when, when we get to that point. So I will open the public hearing at six forty-four. Kelly, there, I don't see a file number. So we will just call it, it is the Cascade Creed Mixed Use Development. You have a number all right.
Yeah, hold on one second. Sorry, I noticed that today that I forgot to put it on the agenda.
It's on page three.
My computer's going real slow. It's land use file number twenty-two dash zero three nine, D R M P, V A R tree.
Okay, we will just call it twenty-two dash zero three nine file. It will begin by calling for any abstentions from anybody on the planning commission. Okay, I see nothing. Any conflicts of interest? Anybody? Okay, nothing seen. Uh, any ex parte contact, including any site visits?
This weekend, this adjacent property.
All right, did anybody look at it on Google Earth?
No, I think I tell you the team have been putting those images right into the staff report, which has been helpful.
Okay, and I'll call for any challenges to the members of the hearing body, the planning commission. Right, if you testify tonight, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved. Or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record. Or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue. You will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval. With sufficient specificity to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue. Precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We will move to the staff report.
Okay. The presenting on your.
Yep.
Oh, there it goes. I think it's just such a big file. Okay, so this is going to be somewhat of a longer presentation than I typically give, just because it's. A pretty complex land use application, as you saw in the staff report, I believe it's sixty-six pages long. Um, so as you're going through that staff report and this for the public as well. What I would mainly, what I would recommend concentrating the most on is anywhere that there's bolded text. Because that's anything that we're recommending a condition on. And then also anywhere in the document where it analyzes something meta criteria or not. Because those, those are the things that you can either approve or reject an application based on. So tho- those would be the two things I would focus in on the most, uh, for anybody that's looking at that document, because I do realize sixty-six pages of text is. Difficult to look through. So I will try to summarize the main points in about twenty-five slides here. So as you'll see on this first map, um, this is the vicinity map. The property in red. Is where the development site is located itself, a highway two eleven, east the village. West of Pine and north of Bornstead Park. So as you can see in the upper left-hand corner, north is pointing up on the screen. I'm not gonna go over all these, but this is another point that I wanted to make. Related to the first point that I just made a minute ago, is that when you're looking at a development site of this size. Also in the Barnstead Village overlay, this is how many different code chapters that. I reviewed while making the staff report. So this is one of the reasons why it's complex. And the staff report is very large, is because there's a lot of codes to look at. And this, this was in the public notice and the legal notice that we put out. So this is again, just some information on where we sent notice, uh, the transmittal and the first line items, just to other agencies. Uh, both internal to the city and external like PG or ODOT. Uh, I just wanted to put some dates on here, showing that we met our. Code required noticing for both to the neighborhood in the legal section of the, of the Sandy Post. And also on the city's Facebook account. I did want to also mention that this application is not affected by the moratorium, and the reason why is because it was filed. In September of two thousand twenty-two, before the effective date on October third. So if this, if this application would have been filed on October fourth of two thousand twenty-two. We would have denied it outright and so that because there's a moratorium in effect, uh, we can't take the application for processing. However, that's not the case. Uh, it's basically what Oregon calls the goal, goalpost rule. So they submitted it prior to that resolution being effective in the city of Sandy. So it cannot be used for our analysis. Just to remind everybody, the proposals for seventy-eight multifamily residential units and ten office spaces. One of the existing houses on the site will be demolished and the other existing house will remain. I think they're gonna fix it up. And have a new driveway access from the south and close the two driveway accesses along highway, uh, two eleven. The four buildings to the south of where Cascadia Village Drive will go through, which we'll show in a few minutes here. Those will all contain multifamily residential buildings. The two north will contain residential on the upper floors. Um, and a mix, uh, mixed use office on the ground floor with some, uh. Dwelling units on the ground floor as well. And then this is very important to note, a lot of what kind of made the layout decisions in this development. Are related to Cascadia Village Drive being extended east to west, Village Drive being extended north to south. Pine Street being extended north up into the development site. And the highway two eleven improvements and driveway, um, removals that occurred along highway two eleven. So thi- this development site. In some senses was already kind of laid out for the applicant. In that they had very little ability to change the layout of Cascadia Village, Pine Street or Village. Basically, they had no ability to change those. So what you see on the proposal is pretty much, uh, the development layout that any developer would have proposed on the site. The zoning and acreage, so there are three zones, low density residential, which we call R one. Medium density residential, which we call R two, and village commercial, which is C three. And then there's an overlay, which is the Bornstead Village overlay, so that kind of adds additional complexity and scrutiny on the application. The acreage was eight point eight three acres is what the total site acreage is. One point eight eight acres would be dedicated for right-of-way, which is roads essentially. And that would leave us with six point nine five net acres, which is the development site. So I'm not gonna like go through every bit of this slide, but basically it lays out in those three different zones, what the different densities are. Uh, for the top one, low density residential, there's only point two three acres and there's no new dwellings being proposed in that land. The medium density, which is R two, is three point nine five, which allows for a maximum of fifty-five dwelling units per the development code. The applicant is proposing forty-six, so about nine less than could be allowed if they wanted to go with a higher density. The village commercial, interestingly enough, doesn't have. A density range for residential development. It never has since I've worked here in twelve years, and I, I think when it was created in nineteen ninety-seven, it was never given a density at that time as well. And it's something I would, I would recommend rectifying in the future, but for now, this is what we're stuck with. Um, so what they're proposing thirty-two dwelling units and the one existing house to remain. This is somewhat controlled though, because there are standards such as height setbacks, parking, landscaping minimums, so. It's not like you could just go with unlimited density because of the other, uh, restrictions within the development code. So the, the bottom line is it's, it's meeting the, oops. It's meeting the allowable uses, which is multifamily and office on the C three land. And it's meeting the density ranges for all three zones. The proposal is. The, right now, there's two lots which run kind of north to south, so they run from highway two eleven down to Bornstead. One of the code provisions is once you put a right-of-way through a property, you have to partition it. Uh, one of the other complexities is I think they were trying to clean up the property lines, so there was no property line running through any buildings, which is a violation of the Oregon plumbing code. So now instead of two properties running north to south, there's three properties that are running more horizontal east to west. And they're labeled here. So everybody can kind of see that. And just to orient everybody, Village Boulevard's on the left-hand side of the screen, so that's the road going north to south. And Cascadia Village Drive's kind of bisecting the property and then Pine Streets on the east end. Or the east kind of edge of the property. There's the site plan showing all of the buildings, so in total, there's six buildings. The one existing house to remain at the top. Um, it's showing. A bunch of roads and road improvements being put in, uh, one point eight eight acres of that, so it's, it's quite a bit of roads going in. Um, several hundred parking spaces. And also a lot of landscaping. Uh, the landscaping is in the civil plan set that's in the packet, but I did not include it in my slideshow. They're also proposing some large recreational areas. Uh, north of Bornstead Park heavily treed, so there's, if you look at the tree plan, it's heavily treed along the south property line there. And then they're also proposing some different recreation areas, both on the southern part of the property, south of Cascadia Village Drive. And on the north part of the property north of that. And that's required by the development code that when you have over, I believe it's five multifamily housing units, you have to provide. Recreational area for, of two hundred square feet per dwelling unit. So it'd be two hundred square feet times seventy-eight. And then in addition to that, you also just have to provide other landscaping, as the code lays out. So they are requesting some variances. This one. This one's not of their making, it's just because of how the roads are already laid out. Uh, Pine Street has to go north from its current terminus per the code provisions. And then Pine Street North, which is on the upper hand here at the screen. That's shown in the Bornstead Village Plan going up to the highway. However, as you've probably seen in the staff report, our. City transportation engineer is not recommending that that goes all the way through. Um, because they don't want basically another access point out to the highway. Instead, there, we're recommending that it turns over to Galway, and I'll show that in a few slides here. Um, but this variance is basically a request. Does my cursor work? Of course it doesn't. So what the request is, is that it's less than a hundred and fifty feet from Pine Street North. Above Cascadia Village Drive, it's less than a hundred and fifty feet horizontally over to Pine Street South. Like I said, I don't, we have, I evaluated, I don't think there's any other way to design it. Another variance, which is not of the applicant's making really either, and I think that's why I'm recommending approval of this. This is for block length. And it's basically a request to exceed the four hundred foot block length from Cascadia Village Drive. To Sequoia Street, which is the street just south of Bornstead Park. Um, there's really no way not to exceed this. Uh, the city doesn't want another park at the north terminus of Bornstead Park. We talked about it pretty extensively recently with the Parks Department. Um, so the applicant was pretty much stuck with just putting it, just having a block length that exceeds four hundred feet. So we're recommending approval of that variance as well. Just having a block length that exceeds four hundred feet. So we're recommending approval of that variance as well. Uh. And as you, and as you can, I don't know if you can always see on this one, the applicant is proposing a. Pedestrian cross through from Cascadia Village. Down to Bornstead Park and that would be a public easement. Bisecting the long block there. This is another variance. I think you're very familiar with this. People that have been on the commission for a while, um. Have seen this a lot. So it's obviously something in our code that we need to change. We, we just approved this for State Street Homes, um, a month or two ago. And this is the provision to. Uh. Reduce the offsets along a building. To less than eight feet every twenty feet. So I think, I think we've approved it. Pretty much every time it's been requested because nobody is building it. To these dimensions at this point in time. So it's, it's a, I, I would argue it's a code provision that we need to change on our end because. We haven't seen a multifamily housing project and probably. At least my twelve years here. That has actually been able to meet this code provision and still build. To kind of the. What I would say is kind of the. Current style of garden apartments that we're seeing around in Sandy. I haven't seen anybody be able to meet this standard yet. So that's what that is. It's an offset standard. This is another one that we get a lot. Um, and in this case, I think it's pretty valid. This is a tree variance request. Um, sometimes there's a lot of healthy trees on sites and we still see this request. In this case, uh, their arborists evaluated all the trees. And then we had our third party, our arborist that works for the city evaluated also. Uh. Our third party arborist said there's only four to six healthy trees. Most of the trees on the north end of that property. Are actually in a pre-bad state of decline. And he was recommending the majority of them not be retained. There are some trees that were decently healthy. Uh, north of the property, but those are in the right or right away, right where the sidewalk and all the highway to eleven improvements seem to go in. So those need to be removed. So we're also recommending approval of this variance. I will say though. I'm recommending ninety-three to ninety-seven mitigation trees are planted. Um. Which if you look at the landscape plan, the majority of those would be planted along the southern edge. On the park. So this is, this one's kind of a complex one. I'll just say that upfront here. This is the right away modifications that our city traffic engineer and myself are recommending. Uh, so as I, as I said, we're not recommending Pine Street to go all the way through to highway to eleven. We're recommending that it starts to turn and go to Galway so that there's a connection there in the future. We're recommending that we. The city conditions that the asphalt north of that's removed, but that the right awaited dedication stays intact. And we saw this, we saw the street trees and a sidewalk that goes up to two eleven. With that change, we would be recommending extending the curb and planer strip and sidewalk. On highway to eleven east to the project boundary. We would also be recommending narrowing the medians on both Cascadia Village Drive and Village Boulevard to provide for on-street parking on both sides of the road. Um. The, these streets that are being proposed by the applicant. They're too narrow to provide on-street parking and also fire apparatus access. So. Right now with what they're being proposed that you wouldn't have on-street parking anywhere on Cascadia Village or. Village, but what I'm recommending in public works is in agreement is that we'd like to see the medians decreasing width. On those two streets and then on-street parking. Uh. Along the frontage of both these. Both these roads that are being sold. The other thing that's nice for the city. Is a twenty-foot median's actually very expensive to maintain. It's just a ton of weed pulling and maintenance costs. So going down to a nine eleven foot median still allows for the trees. Uh, but it gives it a more realistic maintenance of that median as well. The really complex issue here is what we're going to do with Pine Street. South. And the recommendation from our traffic engineer. Is to install bollards for the time being. To block any vehicles that are trying to go east from the development side on Cascadia Village. So right now you'd be able to use Pine Street North. If you lived in the subdivisions to the east of this development site. But people coming in and out of this development site would not be able to travel east on. Cascadia Village Drive. The main reason for that is. Because they, this, you know, I'll just point it out here. It's very complex. This property owner that's developing doesn't own. This acre here. And there's no way that they can force anybody to dedicate right away. They already talked to them. So this section here. Will remain private property. And so there's not enough room basically to have two-way traffic going through here without that whole piece of land. So for the time being, you would install bollards here and here. This could still be used for like bikes and stuff through here. And at some point when this is widened. Then there would be traffic through both ways. This will also be blocked for now because it's going to be too narrow and there's not going to be anywhere to go. Um, but we, we always recommend and require the asphalt to put in with the bollman. Cause otherwise there's no other way to really require the future of the bollman. At some point when this goes through, what we had planned on doing is this median will be extended all the way to here. And so if you were to come north here, you could go around the median and go west down. But it, what it would restrict is that anybody coming south down here would have to turn this way. It's, it's basically trying to put less impact down this. This neighborhood here by the design that we're trying to put forward. And then eventually you would be able to go east on Cascadia out towards that road. Hopefully that makes sense. There's a bunch of findings and conditions on it. I just wanted to kind of draw it out for you tonight. Cause I think it's really complex to explain. The other two here, um, oh man, those are kind of really small. So the one on the, on the left-hand side, that's just basically showing narrowing that median down, uh, as I already said. And then on the east or on the, on the right-hand side of the page here. Showing a small off-site sidewalk connection. To connect it to a gravel pathway in Bornstead Park and that was requested. Uh, verbally by both the public works department and the parks and, and rec department. And then the other last thing here is adding additional asphalt, um, to the southern. Terminus of Cascadia Village. And the main reason for that is so that fire trucks and dump trucks. And mail delivery and all, and school buses can all turn around down there is the reason why. So I'm just going to rifle through these pretty quickly. This is building A and the design on that. Um, as you'll see in the staff report, there's some conditions to add some additional. Supplemental design elements on this building, especially facing out to Village Boulevard. And this is north of Cascadia. This one's also north of Cascadia, uh, to the east of building A. This is building C to the south of Cascadia. Building D. Building E. And building F. So as you'll see. Uh, five of the buildings are three stories. And one of the buildings, building A is the only four-story building being proposed. So this is the only four-story building. Oh, man. Sorry about that. That's only four-story building. The rest are three. And then building, I think it's C. Is kind of a day, it, it, it gives the appearance from that hillside of being somewhat of a daylight basement on the one side. So it's two stories basically. On the one side and then three stories on the other. So the south elevation facing the park. Appears to be, it is two stories. And then I should go down the hill. It begins to be three. And again, these meet all the, uh, development code setbacks and heights standards. Okay. So last couple of slides here. Sorry it's taking so long. Um, the, the, the. The proposals meeting the development codes criterion for partition. For design review, for density, for height. The only thing it's really not meeting for the most part are those four variances as I covered. Um, and then there's a lot of what I would consider. Design or landscaping or parking deficiencies or right away deficiencies. They're not anything that would tip, be typical of denial for the proposal. They would just be conditioned to be modified. And so that's what's in the packet tonight is I think eleven pages of conditions of. If you were to approve the application, here's eleven pages of changes and conditions that will be, that I would recommend tying to the approval. So a few of the few, a few of the major goals consistent with the long-range planning objectives, I'd just like to remind everybody of these. Um, is. The widening, uh, Village Boulevard, Cascadia Village Drive being extended through. Were both in the two thousand eleven transportation system plan. They were also in the one that we just stopped at the other night, although that's not applicable to the subdivision. They're also both in the Bornstead Village overlay plan and so is Pine Street extending north. This development I'm recommending to pay a proportional share fee. And this was recommended by our transportation engineer. Uh, the council would recall this. I'm not sure if the planning commission remembers this or not, but with both the approval of Bull Run Terrace recently. This proportional share fee was charged on that development as well. And basically what it's saying is that these developments are. Causing additional traffic or trips to Born to the Barco Road and Highway to eleven. And therefore they have to mitigate that by paying an off-site fee. And so the fee for this development would be three hundred and forty-seven thousand two seventy. This is in addition to their TS, to their transportation SDCs that they have to pay. Um, again, it's extending Pine Street like Cascadia, uh, with Cascadia Village Drive concurrent with the BDO. And it's also fulfilling the housing needs as identified in the organization study that was adopted in two thousand fifteen. Um, so with that, like I said, I, from, you know, my job at the city is to. Work with applicants, developers and try to find the best outcome possible. Um, I will say that this developer has done a pretty good job of doing that. Their original site layouts and. Uh, the items that they submitted to us at the pre-op and in even after. We worked with them pretty, uh. Pretty earnestly to get those modified so that they'd be meeting our code. Um, as I said. From a planning perspective, it's pretty much meeting the code except for those few variances. And if. If it is approved with those variances and the long list, the conditions that I'm recommending. Um. I would recommend approval. So with that, I will stop sharing the screen. I'm going to turn the camera back.
Okay. Any immediate questions for Kelly? If you, uh. There we go. Okay. All right. Now we'll move on to the applicant presentation. And, uh, while we can't see you yet, uh, let you know that you will have twenty minutes to, uh. Make your presentation. And as for everybody, uh, remember to give us your name and your address for whoever, uh, speaks.
And Chair, I'm going to be promoting. Anybody on the applicant team that wants to have a speaking role during the presentation will raise their hands and I'll promote them to a panelist. So right now we have Megan that I promoted to a panelist. And Zach. And that appears like the two of them will be speaking. So if you, if you can both turn your camera on. That way it just kind of speeds it up. Okay, the floor is yours.
How do we get multiple images here?
Oh, hold on one second.
We're just, we're just seeing, right? Button.
Okay, take it away, Megan.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Um, my name is Megan Howie. I work for BCR on behalf of the developer who's also here tonight to speak with you. Um, I really don't have anything to add to this presentation. I think that Kelly's done a great job of summarizing things and I won't pick up any of your time, um, with redundancy. So. Um, if the developer would like to introduce himself, we'd love to hear anything else to say.
Running another person.
Hey there, everyone. Uh, Zach Baker, um. On behalf of the developer, uh, I just want to thank you all for your time and consideration. So a big thanks to Kelly and the, the planning staff. I know this is a complicated one. Um, and really appreciate you working through it with us and sticking with this. Um. I'll just echo, uh, Megan's comment that I think Kelly's presentation was very thorough and, um. I'll be mindful of your time and, uh, answer anything that you have questions on, but, uh, we'll otherwise remain quiet.
Anybody else on your presentation team? I mean, it's pretty short and sweet unless you have questions. No complaints here.
And they will have a chance to rebut.
Yes.
If you guys on your side, do you guys have questions with them or?
Not at the moment. I don't see any.
Zach, do you mind just, um, muting just so we don't get any background noise?
Yeah. Okay. Now we'll move into the public testimony, uh, portion and we will call for public testimony in three parts. Um, I'll first ask for those who are in favor of the proposal. And then we will, uh, move to those who are not in favor or are against the proposal. And there'll finally be opportunity for anybody who is neither for nor against, just as a comment or an observation. A kind of a neutral testimony, uh, area. Um, keep in mind that it helps us most if you, uh, speak to code issues that we can address. There's. Often, there's always issues that are people's concerns. That we cannot address in our decision-making. I will remind those who are on Zoom, who are with us on Zoom, that, uh, if you want to speak. You can just hit, click the raised hand button and wait for, uh. Kelly to. Uh, recognize you. And if we have some, we'll probably go, let's just do, we haven't done this before. We'll go in the room and then to Zoom and back and forth. Uh, to, to keep it mixed up. So you click the raised hand. If you're on the telephone. Uh, it's star nine, will effectively raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. So some of you that are on Zoom, there may be a, uh. Lag for, before you recognize what we give testimony, updating people in the room. So. With all that said. We'll move now to any public testimony who are in favor of the proposal. And again, name and address.
Maybe, yes. Jerry Jones, three eight, three, three zero, Southeast Highway two eleven, which is, um. The property, my wife and I bought the property thirty-four years ago. Been on that piece of property. Where the house is to remain. We've lived in that house for thirty-four years, raised our children, all of that stuff there. Um. We've been involved, got involved in the whole Bornstead Village. Um, thing went through a lot of issues. I don't know if any of you were around. I don't think you were Kelly when all that stuff was going on. Um. Had, you know, had our concerns then, um. And one of the, one of the concerns that I had then that. Has popped its head up here a little bit. You know, I'm in favor of this. We, you know, we need to. Has popped its head up here a little bit, you know, I'm in favor of this, we, you know, we need to, you know, we need to get this done, move on. The, the governor's declared a thirty-six thousand housing unit goal per year. I don't see how that's going to happen unless these type of developments happen in fairly quickly. But that Pine Street thing. Back when that thing was first proposed, I thought that it went away. One of the questions that I asked everybody on the planning commission, city council, whatever, have any of you gone out and walked the site? And the answer was no, no one really had. I can tell you from experience that just pulling out on two eleven is, you're taking your life in your hands, especially right now. Police enforcement isn't what it used to be around there. But where Pine Street would come out on two eleven, I was kind of encouraged to hear that the city's traffic engineer. Isn't recommending that it does. So I guess my question would be, why even have it? Just because code says that you gotta have the thing there doesn't make sense to me why it would have to be. But I, you know, my recommendation is that this thing get moved and moved quickly. And. We can, we can plan our lives a little bit better that we've been in limo for about the last fifteen, sixteen years. I know a lot of people have concerns about views, there's that traffic, this, that, and the other thing. Well, we've been through all that, believe me. Our Mount Hood view has been gone with the townhomes that were built. You know, we didn't like that, but it happened, so we. We just move on. So with that, again, I recommend that you guys move this thing through as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any electronic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sometimes my mind forgets that that's. I don't see any hands raised.
All right, well, we will move on then to public testimony. That is not in favor of the proposal. And I want to give it a second or two for any online ones we can start there if you see any raised hands.
I do not sure.
Okay, then we'll go to the room. Any public testimony that are against the proposal?
Good evening. My name is Troy Shelby, my wife Judy. And we're the one in parcel that Kelly kind of alluded to that. Has all the road right of ways kind of gone through it. Our address is three eight four two zero Southeast Highway two eleven. And. Overall, I guess notes here, overall, we're not objecting to the development of the site. What was our concerns, you know, were we not in favor of a big apartment complex coming next to us? We'd rather see single. Housing units or something like that, but looking through all the codes, it's very complex, it takes a lot of time. Somebody was not really familiar with the codes, it's hard to pull all that information out. So really, we have no objections to any of the codes to the development as far as apartment complex goes and all that that's going on out there. All I ask is, you know, Zach and I have been emailing back and forth, Kelly and I have emailed back and forth. Alls I asked Zach and Kelly or whoever be available, if some concerns do come up when this does get developed and those were still waiting in that parcel. That we have some people to be able to talk to about how to resolve issues. So that's kind of where we're at. And you know, as you bring more people into a confined area, our concern is, you know, crime area, the whole city ordinance is being violated. We live next to the townhomes, there's lots of parking violations, you could go out there and you can get parking violations every day out there, you know. So it's just those type of things and those type of issues, you just want to voice our concern that we'll be able to have somebody to voice to over all that. Guess what our main objective to all this is, or main. Aloud to and, and look for the commission to maybe do some amendment to is the Pine Street Road. Let's go on going from Cascadia Village down to Highway two eleven, Kelly kind of modified that tonight, kind of steal some of my thunder. That's our main contention is that Pine Street Road, that Pine Street Road is right on our property boundary. It's within three feet of my shop, basically, it's within fifteen feet or so by house. And that's kind of where we like to go. If that road's not going to be open, why do we need to be better than this right now? Why do, if there's no real future? The future of that road really depends on the development of my property in the long. And when you look at the road right of ways that are established on my property for any future development. Over a third of my pointy one acres is in road right of ways, who's going to want to develop less than a half an acre? And now Kelly related to the kind of turn Pine Street down to Galway. That just dissects in my property even more, so. Why do we need to put that pine street road in at this time? But even at this time, it's only a half road. Because the other half is earmarked on my property right of way, so our property right away, so. That's kind of what we want to allude to, and now part of the code that I was going to bring up tonight was the street requirements and, and having the. Basically, traffic analysis, if they're bringing that out to Highway two eleven, I want to kind of brought up that. You know, that's a dangerous intersection, you know, it's gets tougher and tougher for us to get out of our driveways as it is right now. And try to bring a street out right there, I think would just. You know, you're setting yourself for another debacle scenario, basically, where you're going to have accident after accident with the speed that comes through there. And with the site variances, you don't have a lot of sight distance in the curators of the road and the hills of the road and stuff, so. So that was kind of part of my thunder and I was bringing out that code for street requirements and stuff, but. It sounds like now that's being modified and not taken out to Highway two eleven, so. It's a little bit of my thunder away, so again, I asked, why do we need to build? You know, a couple hundred feet of pine road when it has no. Use at this time or possibly even future use. Like I said, all your marks to the. To our development of our property. One of the other things I wanted to bring up is developing that road right away is taking out some, basically five. Really good healthy looking trees and. And a green strip up and down that right away, and I know the city's always wanting to retain. Now the large, you know, we've got a couple thirty-two, thirty-inch doublers, a real nice sort of maple. Pink spruce, flower and cherry, that's all being earmarked to be removed, you know. Forget which documents, it's the plant overall plan document, all those are being earmarked to be filled and removed and. If you got these nice trees, why do we need to remove these at this time? Again, that's kind of where objection is, is this road. Pine Street Road, if you look at all the setback requirements. I couldn't build my shop and my house as close as what this road is going to approach on me, so. If I can't do it there, why does the city have an opportunity to approach on my property and my dwellings? That's kind of where we're at and that's kind of the thunder that we want to kind of promote out today. That pretty much. Says, you know, in summary. That's pretty much what I've got. I don't know if Kelly wants my write-up or.
It's, it's up to you if you want to enter it into the record or not.
I mean, that's fine. So I've got some pictures of the trees.
Yeah, we'll make an exhibit.
Thank you. Electronic hands pop up in the meantime.
You don't have many people on there, so. Interesting. I'm sorry, this computer, no.
Okay. Final opportunity for anybody in the room who's not in favor of the proposal. Okay, we'll move on to neutral testimony if you're neither for it or against it. And we call, I call fence riders, you just want to make a comment or you want to be on public Zoom tonight. Round your opportunity.
Everybody wants to go on Zoom.
Like we've never done that before. If you want to speak.
My neighbors all got notices, I didn't get a notice and I, and I don't know why I didn't get a notice, I.
Give us your name and your address.
My name, my name's Jamie Crandy, my address is one nine zero one nine Dublin M New Sandy. And I found out about the Cascade Creek through the city newsletter. But I didn't get it, I didn't get an official letter from anybody saying that where my neighbors all did, so I don't know what happened there. And I just think when I come out Cascadia Village. Last Friday night, I counted fifteen cars before I could get out to two eleven. So what's going to happen when they put seventy-eight more units, two cars per unit? It's just people don't even want to come to Sandy anymore that I know because of the traffic. And I just, that's, I don't understand what's going to happen to the park with seventy-eight units and four people say per unit. That's a lot more people at that park, that hasn't yet even been developed like the picture, doesn't have a baseball field. And the house that's in the middle of that park, I heard was supposed to be for Sandy. A recreation department and it's Sandy ran out of money is what I was told and now it's just a rental house in the middle of the park. I just, I don't understand some of the things that's going on. I've never been to one of these meetings, so a lot of it's way above my head, but. I'm just not very happy about this development and I know people need a place to live, but. At the traffic is the main thing, the amount of people that it's going to bring into that area is just incredible for. Everybody who lives around there and that beautiful park. And the highway two elevens is going to get more dangerous, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any last minute raised hands? Okay.
No.
We will move then to staff recap.
So. I, I agree with the. Both people that spoke, both Jerry and Roy, that bring Pine Street north. Out to Highway two eleven is problematic. Especially with the current rate of speed on Highway two eleven, if. Highway two eleven was reduced to probably twenty-five or thirty miles per hour and. There was actual modifications to the road that actually forced people to go that speed. Then I think Pine Street coming out would not be problematic. But do I, I, I do agree that it's very problematic with the current, not just the posted speed, but the travel speed, which is two different things. I think we did a study on Highway two eleven west of our Letha a few years back. And we were getting speeds in the mid seventies from some people. It's posted at fifty-five miles per hour. In the section that we did the speed study, but people were traveling in the mid seventies, not everybody, but some people. So I, I agree, I, I think it would be very problematic to extend Pine Street out to the highway. The other part of that is an interesting question of what's the necessity to extend Pine Street at all north of Cascadia Village Drive? And I think that's something that the commission. I think it's a good thing for the commission to talk about and analyze tonight. I think for me personally, if you decided not to extend the road at all north, I think we should still require. The right-of-way dedication. And the reason why is because this is our one and only time to get that right-of-way dedication. The block length, I'll flip the camera so that Breezy can see this. So the block length, I'm trying to draw this. So the block length. Is one of my big. Potential issues, so let's pretend this is. You know, this is parcel three. This is parcel one and two. This is Village Boulevard and this is Cascadia. The problem is, is that the distance from here. All the way to that staircase that runs through off of Galway Street is somewhere down here. And so if you don't have a road going through here, at the very least, we would want the sidewalk. And street trees and everything to be constructed in here. So that pedestrians, because there are quite a few people that walk down highway, Highway two eleven. Which I know is dangerous, but over time it'll be improved. And I don't want to miss an opportunity to have pedestrians to be able to access through here from the highway. So if you did decide to remove the asphalt section. What I would encourage the commission is to still get the dedication and to still require the sidewalk and street trees to go up. And the curb, I require the curb as well. Now, if you don't want to require the asphalt. I, I can see arguments both ways. So Galway Street here currently just dead ends. I don't really know how it was designed in that way, like I don't, because typically. I don't know with the parking that's along here, I don't know how a fire truck, I guess they would just have to back down. Yeah, way to get out, typically in the state of Oregon, there's a, at the end of streets, there's like a hammerhead turnaround requirement. Something like that, so a fire truck can turn around and a garbage truck and everything else. However, there's a house right here. Mr. Shelby's house, so I understand why they didn't install this. They don't really know how that setup got approved in the first place. So the benefit of bringing in a road would be that some point. Maybe it's ten years, maybe it's thirty years, at some point, this road is constructed to connect. Maybe at that point, this one becomes a, maybe this gets choked down. To a one-way, because when they get out here, as I said earlier, you're only going to be able to go this way anyways. So after a certain point, it doesn't make sense to even have this be a two-way. So you could have a one-way, the, my only concern, so this is totally up to the commission, of course, my only concern is if you don't pave this right now. Then the trigger for doing that's going to be very difficult in the future with current Oregon state law. So the city would either be on the hook for doing that or potentially if this property was to be redeveloped, Mr. Shelby's property. You might be able to make a justification of an off-site improvement. And we'd have them asphalted in. But I'm just not sure if that would stand or not.
We can require that when it be set aside for it.
You could do that as well, like a fee and loop, we have done that. It's, it's been very hit or miss whether it's worked or not, because typically what ends up happening. Is you collected, say, in two thousand twenty-three dollars. And then it gets built in two thousand forty and the cost of the asphalt section is probably four times the amount or three times the amount or whatever it is. But that, that's why I think at the very least. You require the curb, I mean, I'm sorry, the sidewalk, the street trees and the curb right now. Is it the curb, the curb's going to be as much or more money than that asphalt in there.
Right.
So at least you're kind of setting it up that in the future, if we do decide to bring a road up, you have all that taken care of and then. Either the city will be on the hook for that little amount of asphalt, which is a ton, it's not going to be a ton. And if you did collect a fee and loop, we would at least the developer pay a portion of it.
Right.
So it's not like the city would be all the way out. I, I do get Mr. Shelby's points, you know. It is kind of a weird thing, I would agree, it's just this is our only time to. Legally collect the improvements and that's why we do it, that's why in a lot of jurisdictions, just so the public knows. There's all these sidewalks to nowhere and I agree, it looks absurd, right? But if you don't require it at time of development, then who's going to pay for the sidewalk? The taxpayers. So, or gas tax or any other tax mechanism, but it's you and I paying for it instead of the development that's going in. And that's why there's random sidewalks everywhere in different towns all over the state of Oregon. Because that's the one and only time you really have to have the developer install it. I only had a few other things here, the code compliance issues. As I said earlier tonight, we are going to be getting a second code enforcement officer and one house under myself. So hopefully, it probably won't alleviate all the code concerns, but hopefully it helps. True retention, I would, you know, I would agree that if you decide to just have a fee and loop paid for that asphalt, it will, some trees can be saved for now. And maybe if the road never goes through, they'll be saved then too. The notice, I don't know why. There wasn't a notice sent, you know, the notice, the labels are from a title company. And they just come to us, we don't create the notice list, so. I, I don't know what the problem is there, you might want to contact the county tax assessor. Because the county tax assessor is where the title company gets their labels from. Cause the county tax assessor is where the, uh, title company gets their labels from. So you might, you might wanna just call over there. And then the one, the last thing I will point out is that if this development is to go through. Um, I would agree Bornset Park's never been built to its full vision. The one nice thing about if this development does go through is we would collect fi- uh, around a half million dollars in parks SDCs. Which my hope would be that at least some of those would be put towards additional upgrades to that park. So. And I, I think that's all I had.
Alright, thank you. Now we'll give the, uh, applicant opportunity for any rebuttal that, um. You may have response to any of the testimony. They're all, um.
I don't see anybody's camera.
Okay.
Megan, you, you can go ahead and speak if you'd like. You wanna turn your camera on there, there you go.
I don't have any rebuttal unless the client would like to add anything at this time.
No, I think I'm, I'm good, um, I guess I would just echo, um, what Kelly mentioned. Uh, that there's parks, uh, fees to be collected as well as, um, you know, the, the obvious benefits of. Uh, kinda cleaning up some of the roadway improvements around, um. Cascadia Village Drive and, and Bornstep Park, making those more accessible for, um, fire trucks or emergency vehicles or just general use by the public. So, um, appreciate everybody's comments, um, definitely taking notes on the feedback. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um. We will. Public hearing opens in case we have any questions of Zach. But for the public, either online or in the room here, the opportunity for public testimony is now, uh, closed. And, uh, we will go into our discussion and just through your own information. We could technically close the public hearing, but in the course of our discussion, we have one simple question to the developer. Um, or the applicant, such as what's the color going to be of such and such a building? We have to reopen the public hearing, ask the question, get the response of blue and then make a motion and close the public here. So, um, our practice has been for years to keep it open just so we can talk to the applicant. Uh, ourselves if the need arises and somebody just needs to remind me to make sure we remember to eventually at some point close public hearing. So. Questions, comments? Any, any slides that you wanna see back up?
Yes, I have a question for Kelly, um, given the impact on the neighborhood, is there any way to. Require that those park funds. Substantial portion of them at least be dedicated to the park in the same area?
I don't think, so, that's a really good question. So the. Parks fees are calculated by an SDC methodology that's put together. Some cities have decided to make. Certain like, so there'd be a map in different areas of the town depending on where. The fee or taxes collected from it be used on parks in that area of town. Our parks methodology associated with the parks master plan doesn't get that specific, so they can be used anywhere in town. So I don't think in the final decision, we could probably put it in there, but I, I think the planning commission could. Let the city council know that they would like. A decent percent or a certain percentage to potentially be used at that park, I think. That would be fine, but I think tying it in the decision, I don't. I don't know if our city attorney has any concerns about that, I just, I do. That's the first I've heard of that question, it's a good one, I just don't know if I have an answer. Josh, do you wanna comment on that?
Hey Kelly, I, I signal dropped for a second there, can you repeat what the question was?
It was, can we condition that the parks SDCs that are collected with this development? Can we condition that a portion of them or. Most of them somewhere in there go towards furthering development of Bornstead Park, which is adjacent to this property.
Right, so that would be outside the scope of this decision, um, how those SDC funds are spent as a city council decision. Part of their budgetary authority.
So it could be outside this decision, but the, as I said, the planning commission could certainly talk to the council about that.
Right, or, or make a separate recommendation or something like that, absolutely, but not part of this decision.
And there is a counselor in.
How would we make that separate recommendation? Would it just being in the record of tonight's meeting? Uh, as a recommendation to the city council be considered?
You could do that, um, you could pass a motion separately, making that recommendation formally, or you could just ask your. City council representative to carry that message forward to the city council.
You have one in the room.
For what it's worth, in the Parks and Trails Advisory Board letter, uh, they did also support the expiration of, uh, adding to base two.
Right.
One, one comment that occurred to me when Kelly was doing, um, and this is for more of the public than ourselves. Uh, but doing the little, uh, diagram and thank you so much for that, Kelly. Of Pine Street and saying, this is our opportunity to put the sidewalk and the curb in. Some might say, well, why not leave it off and when the developer comes to do that little thing, make them do it. But correct me if I'm wrong, that's not their property. So it would be more difficult for us, although it can, to make the ones that do the, the extension. Of Galway to do the whole thing. Legal.
That, that's correct, I mean, any, any improvements that we don't require at this time. As, uh, Commissioner Wagner said, we could do a fee and loop. But any improvements you don't do, then we, in, in the future would have to through a, what's called a proportionality test. Show that these improvements are proportional to this development. Now, my one thing I would caution with that is this development site, as Mr. Shelby pointed out, is rather small. So I think it would be hard to say too much, too many offset improvements. I don't think you could put too many on this site, to be honest, so I think it's, uh. You could certainly do that, I think it's just a, it's just a risk.
Right.
Uh, that the city might end up paying more out of pocket to complete the improvements.
Any, um, there's three or four variances we, uh, need to. Consider tonight. Any questions, concerns on any of those from anybody? Do you understand what they? Are about? And, um, any, any concerns or questions with the staff report that gave the rationale? For the recommendation?
I don't have any, but there, it's, I did have a separate question.
Okay, fire away.
Um, my question is for Kelly, it involves, uh, recreation kinda space and, um. I mean, it's not so much, I guess, a concern with this particular property, but maybe the others that have the same thing is how. Uh, it can be kind of bumped onto a separate zone. Uh, for instance, this one it carries over into that kind of little bit of our one zone. Um, as you mentioned at the beginning, kind of the idea behind the commercial. Density requirements was that, you know, you'd have these recreation spaces, these setbacks that were required, but then if you can just kind of. Bump that to another property, you know, to another zone, um, how does that kind of work? Cause you're no longer controlled, didn't say that.
I think the code's silent on it, to be honest, um, as you probably noticed in the staff report. One of the code provisions is to legally tie parcel two and parcel three together.
That was.
Through a covenant. And the two main reasons are so that the parking. And access, it's all kinda shared amongst all these buildings and then the, the recreation is what. Uh, I mean, it's a good question, um, I don't know if I dove into a deep analysis of that, but I do believe the code's silent on it.
You know, cause I'm just thinking down the line, you have a property that's, you know, half C three and half R one, you just. Will load C three up with whatever you want and then, you know, you're good to go.
Yeah, no, I, I get your point, I think, I think that's one of the reasons why we need to have a density standard in C three. I would say on this one, if they did lose, or if they did add more recreation area to. Parcel two and potentially they lost the two units. Uh, they could add more units to parcel three down below.
Sure.
Right, you know what I mean?
Lots of extra room on parcel.
Correct.
Kind of moving around and it makes sense, I'm not really arguing it with this one, I was just to kinda create a bit curiosity for me.
No, I totally get it and I think it's a great question, I think it's something we need to dive deeper into in the code. I do think in this circumstance, it, you know, having a little bit less density on the property to the south of Cascadia Village Drive, I think. For the most part, it's probably a good thing, um, just having a little bit lower along the park there.
Yeah. Thank you.
But yeah, it's a, it's a great question, I think it's something we need to look into more.
Okay, any, any, what are thoughts, um, what to do with, uh, Pine Street as, as it stands? What are the conditions for that area, Kelly? I don't have a memory of the, the drawing that you gave with the city engineers comments. Not in the red markings, is that, um. Has that been transferred into the, uh, conditions?
The, what I showed on PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes, that's what, that's how it's written up in the findings and conditions.
Okay.
So what I, what I recommended in the, in the. In the findings and conditions is that this section of Pine Street that ties into eleven, that that's all removed. And that they just had this section of asphalt for now, and then these improvements continue up and then. You know, Pine Street was shown as opening up to the highway, so with removal of that. I was recommending that these, you know, the sidewalk and street tree improvements on the highway continue across.
Mm-hmm. And that's the way it is in the.
That's the way it is in the sta- in the recommended staff report. Now, if you were to remove this or change this into fee and loop or something. Obviously, that would have to be changed.
And that's just speaking primarily to the S.
I mean, you could do it to the curb as well, I.
But then that would cancel the curb all the way up, probably.
Yeah, and that's gonna be as expensive or more than the asphalt. Um, I, I think if we didn't require the sidewalk from Cascadia Village to Highway two eleven. I think technically we'd be looking at another variance because. You know, from here, for these staircases, we wouldn't have a pedestrian amenities through that whole section. So I, I definitely would recommend putting in the stairs and the trees through there, I mean, the, the sidewalk and the trees. And then the curb and asphalt that could be done through a fee and loop or one or the other.
I would be in favor of going all the way to the curb and then.
The curb and sidewalk.
Curb sidewalk and trees.
Is the only way into it.
Just a minute, ma'am, ma'am, we're, we're close to public comment. Sorry, sorry, I didn't make that clear. Okay. And, and I, I would agree with that as well.
And also, uh, continuing the sidewalk along two eleven across.
Right, and that's in the, the, uh, conditions.
That's currently in your condition, yes. The changing this to be a loop, I would have to modify that.
That's the only, the only change to the condition would be the fee and the. Cause you have in the conditions a sidewalk and a curb.
I have in the conditions, yes, that the curb goes all the way to Highway two eleven.
With.
Oh wait, I don't think that is in there, so you would modify that as well.
Okay.
Well, the, so just, just to specify, the curb.
This is, so the curb would only really need to go to essentially the north side of. That street coming in.
So, this is where it gets, this is where it gets very complicated, right? Cause. Her, yeah, like Commissioner Wagner just said, the curb only needs to be here, right?
Yeah.
But do we really wanna put the curb on the curb? It's just gonna be floating out there and.
I think.
Do you not wanna put the curb, you know, I don't know, like, where do you stop it? Do you just go like up to there?
Cause you don't need a curb above that, well.
How about, I would be in favor of the curb all the way up to the sidewalk with the idea being that. It could not develop for twenty years, right? And by that time, two eleven could have been approved to the point where. It can still potentially connect, right?
So you'd be doing curb up to here?
Yeah. I mean.
And then no asphalt.
No asphalt. Not knowing what the future of two eleven looks like, not knowing what the future of that of history looks like.
Urban sidewalk.
Trees, yeah.
And trees.
I mean, the one nice thing about that feature is this area that's the trees and the lanes, it would be. It'd be contained more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that's what I was thinking, cause eventually there would be a park strip. So the sidewalk. If, if, if a road went through.
Oh.
There would be a park strip.
I mean. I think this is kind of the best, from like a planning perspective, this is giving you the most flexibility. You're extending the curb up and then this might get put in someday, or maybe it will go all the way through, or maybe never, none of it will happen.
Either way, at least we have pedestrian access and.
Yeah, so it would be curb, park strip with trees, sidewalk. Going east and west. And then, uh, uh, payment in lieu of to do the blacktop portion when that road comes.
For the section for the curb.
Right.
Probably, yeah.
Right, and it would just. It would just be a matter of. Yeah, it would be, on the north side, there would be a funny thing where you've got a curb going straight up. To separate off the park strip, right?
Or hit the sidewalk, cause it hit the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, it would just go up to the back of sidewalk on two eleven.
Oh, there would be no curb with the park strip or no?
So it'd be a, yeah, the cross section would be a. Be a five-foot sidewalk. So it would be five feet. And then you'd have street trees. And then you'd have a curb. And then this area in the right of it would just be unfilled for.
Uh-huh, right.
And then along Highway two eleven. And this is the sidewalk, it would just go like that. And so this sidewalk would go up to that sidewalk. But this curb would just dead into the, it would just terminate into the back of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Should be a little odd looking, but it wouldn't be, I don't.
Right.
I don't think it's a big of a deal.
It contains the sidewalk, it makes it pretty with the trees and all and. Makes sense.
I mean, I think it makes maintenance a lot easier, cause like, say this is park chip and everything, it's just, it's just kinda. Go out, I don't know, it just gives a, it delineates a space for it.
Right, I agree. Keeps your road in there. Is that what we're thinking? We got it understood, cause Kelly's gonna have to put it in writing.
Well, that's why I was.
So the fee and loop is to cover the, the. Asphalt and. Any changing to the curb, cause there'd be some curving on that curvature on their property.
I think we probably have to just.
Eat it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
I don't know how I would even.
But I think that's worth the flexibility.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Before I forget, somebody close the public motion.
I moved to the post, okay.
Then moved in second and closed the public hearing at seven fifty-nine, all in favor, say hi.
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 I, I see that eye, Breezy. Okay, any other? Uh, Jan.
I just have a, a minor one that I had mentioned to Kelly and that's on, um, number fifty-nine, it talks about. Roofing could include or should include wood shingle as well as composition and other things and. Given our wildfire, um, discussion and hazard. Discussion and hazard policy for the city. I think that we probably should remove the. Which she will roofing. Maybe not only from here, but discuss in the future about removing it from the entire ordinance.
Was that on on page fifty nine?
It's number fifty nine and it's on page twenty one.
I went looking for it and I couldn't find it in the condition, so it's. Oh, okay. Here we are. That's where we saw.
That's just a minor piece compared to this.
Yeah, and so Commissioner Lee, it was it was removed from. The I two and I three zones by the city council passing that ordinance for the modifications to that, but it it is still technically allowed in a few of our other zones. But yeah, if you changed it, you could even change the condition to explicitly say no shingle, no wood shingle permitted. And I do agree, I think, working on the Oregon wildfire task force, I don't even think you're going to be able to do what shingles in Oregon pretty soon.
So really, all that. You have involved the applicant shall revise the elevations to detail the shingles as architectural brackets. So we just. You're you saying we need to add something that says that it can't be. Would. Because the first statement just says that it requires them to be wood or architectural, just one of the.
The conditions that already kind of crossing up what it seems like.
So you could just.
Yeah.
Which you will.
I think you could add some, I could add some additional clarity to it.
We can't remove which singles from the first part because because that's just that's just saying what the code says.
Right, and the developer has offered an alternative.
And and we're just saying now they have to be architectural, not three term. But if you want to add something, he could add something that just says, and oh, by the way, they can't wood. But that's not.
Right. Just more of a future.
Yes, yes, definitely. Hey. What are we forgetting, Kelly? Got the, I mean.
I mean, I don't know, it's sixty six pages long. You know, if you saw anything else that I.
Sixty eight.
Oh, it was sixty eight.
Yeah.
Oh, because the two, yeah, it is sixty eight. You know, to be honest, I. Without having any other planners on staff right now, it's. Emily was gracious enough to take a look at it for me just for edits and she did catch a few. Errors that I had in there. So I don't think there's any in there, but. I'll look through it again when I before we do the final order and before you sign it.
I've just got a couple typos I'll give you afterwards.
Okay, I mean, if you want to give them to me now, we can just, I can get them in there for you.
Okay, I mean, these are just from a procreator on page sixteen. Number twenty nine.
Finding twenty nine?
Okay. It's different than the one I have written in section page sixteen. No, I'm not thirteen. Gary, get to sixteen. Section seventeen fifty four fifty. Where am I going? Fifty four fifty.
Is it where it says carriers?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Got that one?
Yes.
And. Then. I had on page thirty three. I know what it was, what it is, is the pages in the document are not necessarily the pages on the. Up here. Thirty three, one eleven. Kind of in. Fourth line from the bottom. Oh, no, that's just how I copied it. Says it says, but turning movements do not met the minimum value.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right there. About five, six lines above the letter A. I mean, anybody reading it would have understood what. What was being said. Okay, I don't know that we need to labor it any further.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Are all planned retention trees and mitigation trees planned for parcels two and three? Basically, I'm asking if they put them on one and they sold off. Are they eventually going to get toward them?
The answer would be no, because there'd be a restrictive covenant that runs with the land that's recorded and then that would be on the title. So they could they could propose someone one if they want, but they will be it'll tie up the future development of that property. Which maybe they're not concerned about. I'm not I'm not sure. So the the proposal did have quite a few mitigation trees already. I think it said in the staff report how many, but I think they need to add another thirty or so.
Yeah, kind of like something to move around a bit.
Correct, so. Yeah, they they might want to put some of them on first one. But yes, in the city of Sandy, we started about twelve, thirteen years ago, recording restrictive covenants. That are then tied to the property. And so even when they sell, they're tied to the title.
All right, and we need a motion, it sounds like, to accept it based on the findings of packs. The conditions of approval with our. Modifications regarding Pine Street.
Long with the tent here, Chair, I knew that we approved file number twenty two zero three nine. Along with the four variants with the conditions noted in the staff report. And changes noted by you as well as our adjustments noted to. Require curb trees and sidewalks with a feel new for the asphalt. And I think that's it.
I would second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve file twenty two dash zero three nine. Based on everything that Aaron said. We will go to a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Bullen.
I agree, agree.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee Wingberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramser?
Yes.
And Chair Crosby?
Yes. Motion carries. And. Do we, since we have our layups on in the room. You heard our comments, we'll just. About the the park fees.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a question. Do you want to give a an allocated percentage or do you want me to just say significantly?
Significant is kind of subjective. Depending on what's significant to you or what's significant to me.
Yes, that's right. And we're in the era of clear and objective. I I although personally, I hate to put it like a percentage. Because that really locks it in. You can't go one up, one percent up, you can't go one percent down. Although, here's what we can do. We can, we can message the council our preference of a percentage and let them. Take care of. How specific they want it, yeah. If they if they even want to. Pass their own resolution or something.
I was saying we could slide also, say between this percent and this percent and kind of give a range and. It's kind of the same thing you just said, but. You know, kind of narrow it down a little bit to what we would hope for and and give a little bit of objectiveness there.
What would be a.
We don't think it. My problem is I don't know how much it costs for the park. You know.
Why, it would be added to for others.
Sure, but like, I mean, I would like enough percentage to get something done.
Right, right. Is it just going to sit there for the next ten years, waiting for more money to do something?
Right.
And that we don't know. And there's there's no way that we would know tonight that anybody can know. We could do something like saying at least half of it or at least three quarters of it, or something like that.
Sure.
Be earmarked, and I think is that is a good term to use.
I like something like the majority would get. To see like nature of that's.
Then it would have to be at least fifty one percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please do something with this.
Then let's let's do this so it goes on record and and. They can go to the council as we did this. We passed a resolution or a vote or something. So if somebody would. Put that in the words, just that the majority of the.
Do you want to do a motion?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Majority of the. It's not SDCs, it would be the part, what's the official word?
No, it would be the parks SDCs.
The parks SDCs.
That's correct.
That the majority of them be used within Bornstead Park.
Okay, I know again, Chair, I move that we make recommendations to city council that the majority of the parks SDCs from the Cascadia Creek mixed use development. Be used for improvements at Bornstead Park.
I see.
That was perfect. We'll just do a a voice voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it's in the record, so you have an official document. Anything else, otherwise. We are adjourned.
Thanks everybody. Thanks for coming. We do appreciate all the comments.
Thank you for your testimony.
My hands are clammy, sorry.
That's all right.